...made that call, kind of a wild card, not knowing what to expect, the king card. So, we had 27 students actually enroll this fall that brought our enrollment members up to elementary. So, quite an influx of students for us the first year. Thank you. Question?
Three through five, six to eight, it's been a new beginning of the year. All been very positive too. I appreciate the hard work of the staff to create that kind of environment. We had a school-to-home engagement training during the TIR day. There's only 60 teachers that are the teachers. I think we'll be learning that more in the coming school year. Back to school night, 350 people attended back to school night. Highly successful. We collect fees during that time, take care of a lot of business. Get that out of the way so we can just roll right into the school year. We're also, middle school is also participating in the cookie dough sales this year. RTI training coming up, the first week of October. And everyone seems really excited about the reading series that was purchased. It addresses Common Core and RTI. And I don't think I've ever seen teachers this excited about a reading series before. So, I think it's a good choice. I appreciate that support in that purchase. That's it.
Okay. So, question B.
Well, as you can see, the second train field has yet to start their work on it. They have given me a timeframe of the 17th is when they expect to weld equipment in and start work on the second train field. They'll put up a pantene and do all the security that's necessary to provide for a safe playground and a safe working environment for their equipment and their employees. So, we're excited to get this project underway, get it rolling. We should finish up about the first, maybe the second week of November, barring any complications. Moving on with school board policy review. We were planning to try to have the Montana School Boards Association updated revision to let policy and done and presented tonight, but there was a glitch in being able to get that from the school boards. And so, they will get it to us for the October meeting. We'll begin that review process at that time. Safe Products to School project. We are talking with the county, encouraging them to begin the Safe Products to School process so that the CTEP money that are available to the county can be committed and tied up so that Long Avenue can have its improvements done to it by next summer. So, hopefully here in the fall, they will select an engineer, get the design phase done, and then do biddings somewhere in France Free. With the France Free bid, they would most likely give most advanced pages on numbers from contractors at that time as those contractors set their schedule for the summer and fill up their calendar for those projects. And then, the project for Safe Products to School, hopefully will have a start date somewhere after the end of the school year so that it doesn't buy a trial sequence going into session. And then we'll have the improvements made to Long Avenue that are long overdue. Scholheim. We have the Scholheim family that lives up near Field Five on the baseball park up here near the park. They face Iowa Avenue. They paid for payments back to their home. They recently approached me with concerns over some of the student behavior that they're seeing in the parking lots up there around the park. And had asked whether we could block off Iowa Avenue since the school district does own Iowa Avenue. I explained to them that Iowa Avenue at this point is considered an access road from Taishu through to Holloway. And so, we were not at the liberty of closing that off. They did ask if they could put up some signs in the area, if they had school zone and some street signs. And they did do so. I said that no problem. And they said, you know, under some video surveillance and stuff up there, we may look to get some remote cameras and put them up on our school property up in that area so we can keep better track of what is actually happening up there. We did block off the road near the district offices. We recall that road was opened up the previous summer so that the millings could be hauled up to the park. And we finally, you know, this summer took care of blocking it completely. And we're not seeing quite many issues up around the park that once was, seemed like a inch-tending to block students that gravitated up there because of the access up there. And now, it's not so much so. And so, I will continue to talk with the Scholheims about their concerns. There is the possibility that we could block Iowa Avenue off in the future, and that is if we determine that we want to build a building in the area and make the property all one piece of useless property. There is a process for doing so, but it's a complicated one. You'd have to work with the county on and the county attorney's office on. And it's something about us giving up a portion of our property and adjacent landowners claiming that property. And the idea would be we give up the property inside our home boundary so there is no adjacent landowner. And so, nobody, no adjacent landowner can put claim to it and then abandon that road and claim it and cut it off and block that road off. But before we do anything like that, the county attorney would be involved, and the fire department would be involved, and the park would be involved. And we'd want to make sure that the greatest, greater interest of the community is being served, aligned such actions that at this time, it will continue to remain its openness. And that is my request.
Okay. Okay. So, now we've got to move on to personnel and looks like they're hiring some coaches here. Question B.
So, the board pack, if you notice as we're going through directions, that we actually not draw a committee of individuals to the board for hire even though the seasons have started. And that is hiring volleyball coaches. Jeff Muller is a head coach and has been. And Lonnie Doughty has worked with Jeff in the past and told us that the two individuals are essentially hired to serve as volleyball coaches for this season.
Discussion? Call for the question?
Yeah, sorry, just a quick question. Why are we so carbonated and ironed when that?
Well, we'd have actually put some other individuals on earlier in the spring, and it was just an oversight on my part.
So, discussion? Call for the question? All those in favor? Aye. Aye.
And we have the middle school volleyball coaches. We have Ms. Brianne and Ms. Welch, both who've agreed to work with Jeff Muller and Lonnie Doughty to be middle school volleyball coaches. So, we're asking if these individuals are hired to serve as volleyball coaches for this season.
Discussion? Call for the question? All those in favor?
High school football coaches, Terry Mancher, and there's Tyler Gilder and Ronnie Carson have been coaches for the past several years. And it's just an oversight on my part to not have them before the season started. We're asking if these individuals are hired to work with the newest assistant coach that we hired last spring.
Discussion? Call for the question? All those in favor?
In the middle school football ranks, I'm excited for this reason. I moved taught and graduated, two former graduates that have graduated since I've been here. So, I know these individuals, and it's exciting to see that now, as young adults are coming back, you know, serve the school district and the community by being coaches in our middle school program. As you recall, John Ziegler is an outstanding football player and a new, very good football player. Also, Les Minden is a person who has shown interest, and he'd also be hired as a middle school coach. So, I'm asking if these individuals are hired as middle school football coaches for the next, for the season.
Discussion? Call for the question? Oh.
Discussion. Can I discuss? I just, I just wondered, and I don't know if it's oversight or whatever, but I had a woman individual tell me at the park the other day that he was going to be junior high coach down with Mr. Lippy. And I don't see his name on there. I'm just. Is that right? I didn't follow. Okay. Mr. Ziegler, do you know anything about that?
Yeah, I do. I had gone through about two weeks worth trying to find coaches for that position. And Mr. Lippy had been volunteering at practice, and I was waiting to share back from somebody else who had expressed interest in the position. And at the point that I had not reached out to this other person, I contacted Tonio and asked him if he was interested. He said that he didn't know if he could commit to the time. And on the spot, he said he didn't know if he could commit to the time. And I felt like he was kind of telling me no, that he did say that he would like to discuss it and get back to me. But in the meantime, somebody else contacted me and said that they did want the job, and they brought the application to me immediately. And the season had already started, and I felt like it was time for me to make that quick move and get the job filled.
Okay. So, any further discussion? Call for the question? All those in favor? Aye. All right. So, what's that?
We have one high school girls' basketball coach who we assume needs to be filled, and Cheryl Muller has agreed to step up to be assistant basketball coach for the season.
Yeah, she's actually been my assistant for the last two years. So, she does a great job.
We're going to hire Cheryl Muller as an assistant high school girls' basketball coach for the 13th, 14th year.
Question? Any question? All those in favor? All right. Okay. So, now we come to superintendent's contract renewal.
This time, I'm asking the school board to consider renewing that contract. I'm asking the board to allow it in the Montana law. It could be a three-year contract. And I'm asking that in the first year of the contract, it's already frozen at previous year's level where the next two years of that, I would receive a 3% each of those years. And so, I'm asking the board to reconsider this request. And also, I'm asking that language in the contract also be amended under Section 12 to state that this contract may be terminated by written notification with superintendent.
Okay. So, let's talk about discussion.
Do we have any contract negotiations on?
No.
Are we required to?
No.
We're not required to have contract negotiations. We have not had. And you are recommended to us. This is your recommendation. It's my recommendation.
I might add that he has recommended that it was on my encouragement to, we had stated in previous meetings that we were going to have a, this is another contract. And it was with my encouragement that the community was just nomination for this. And I am totally agree with him. I think he's going to, the job, he's not asking, we're not asking at this point for the additional revenue, other than a fixed contract. And then, the next two years, we're going to send various pieces of debt. I think it's recommended he can remember that.
Should be saying $91,572 for the remainder of this year. It'll be up to $94,319 for the next year, and $97,149 for the 2016-2016. Is that correct?
Correct.
Superintendent, do you have any things you'd like to press on?
The only concern I have is maybe pay board until after the meeting on Thursday.
Tell them the reasons we got to.
Okay. Well, we, at this point, we have a motion and a second on the table. So, we can come back to that if this doesn't go right. That would be the way we do it. We have to go down this first. So, any other discussion? Mr. Paris?
Yeah, as Mr. Finley just said, we talked before, I don't quite understand if you're just getting a reprimand or is that all the board can do up there? I'm asking Mr. Finley.
I'm sorry. I'm not.
Oh, maybe I'm not. Okay. On Thursday, you have a meeting, and you said something about a reprimand. Is it just something to go, you did something wrong and whatever, it's a week? Or could it be something internal?
It could be something worse. Again, the recommendation by the Office of Public Instruction is to place a reprimand in my certification file. However, Board of Public Education, and if a compelling enough argument is made by the witnesses on OPI, they could decide to take most significant action, which is either suspension or revocation of my certificate. And in either case, would cause a breach of contract, and the board would not have to want it.
Well, may I say to the board that you have special meetings all the time. Why not have a special meeting next week? Because it'll be over with by then. Discuss the same.
Well, that was an option, but we chose to bring it forward at this time. So, I, you know, thank you for that.
I'm just curious, when the contract expired and what it is running on now, is there a revocation saying it's month to month? Or what has, when did it?
Let me, let me answer that. Montana code, right, says that if you are in year three of a multiple-year contract with a superintendent, and you do not notice that superintendent by February 1st of your intention to not renew, that the contract automatically rolls for one year. So, that's what Mr. McGee is currently working with. We did not notice him on February 1st of any non-renewal. So, his contract automatically rolled at the last level for one year. So, what we're saying is-
Next year, is that what you're saying?
It would go, it would go for the 2013-14 school year because his contract hires July 1 through July through June 30th.
Okay. So, it's July 1 of next year?
No, July, we're saying July, the role contract started July 1st of 2013.
Okay.
It expires July, June 30th of 2014.
Okay. Well, that again is sort of the question that was asked. If the contract isn't up and it's rolling over all the way through June, and we're two days before a hearing, I'm just curious, you're going to have to, if something happens at the hearing, then the court's going to have to have a special meeting, and they're going to have to refend and all of that. Why not wait two days or a week?
Can I address that? I honestly don't know how the OPI is going to respond, but the bottom line is, as a board of trustees, we have full confidence in Mr. McGee as a superintendent. And at this point, he's been on this temporary, I guess you would call it provisional, because of course it's rolled in because of Montana and our new code. And we felt that we have full confidence that this hearing is going to, that there is going to be an issue, that we will, that we will be heard as a board of trustees. That this, that we have handled this, and that he deserves a contract to move on. And so does the district. The district, you know, he, as was spoken earlier by some of the individuals here, we have a school district to run here. And we don't want it to be on a year-to-year basis. We want it to keep going. We want, we want to show both the OPI and our district, our employees, that we have confidence in what's going on. And we want this business of education to continue here at the moment.
Well, and I don't question that. My question is, if you didn't notify him in February that you were going to do anything different but rehire him, why do it six, seven months ahead of the contract running out the end of June next year?
Well, because we want to extend his contract, not just make it a one-year contract, but make it a three-year contract.
Understand that, but do you have to do that before June?
When we build, we do it. You know, in order to keep the continuity going in our district, we need to do that. It functions at a much better level that way.
You have to do it by February 1st?
If.
To do it by February 1st?
Just for the last year. Pardon? We are extending the contract past this current school year. But we're including that in the language of the contract that we are offering him tonight.
All right. Let's go.
By passing this tonight, you're sending a clear message about local control and about your support for Mr. McGee. Rather than waiting and sending a message that says, well, we have some doubt, I think acting is being proactive.
I think that crossed several of our minds. We'll relax.
I agree with Mr. Dimon. One thing about this is we want local control for our board. If we wait and let OPI do whatever they want to do, that's showing them that you don't want local control. That's how I feel about it. So, give the man his contract so that the school can move forward. We're already starting to think about next year's project. You don't talk, in school, when you're talking big projects, you don't look at projects as of this week. Mr. McGee actually has a vision for this school, and it's to make it a better place. So, please give him this contract, and don't let OPI judge what you're, what you're supposed to be doing here in the local level.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I'll say one more thing. As a teacher, knowing that our superintendent has a contract, I feel that that gives our staff stability, and it gives our kids stability, and it gives, lets our parents also know that we support each other.
Thank you. All right. Anybody around the table who want to say anything more? I guess I want to say that it, even if we, as we send a message to OPI and to the Board of Public Education, it's perfectly okay for us to note to them that the vote was 3-2, or the vote was 4-1, or the vote was 5-0. But we vote here at this table by a majority, a simple majority. So, even though not everybody at the table will agree with the action, it's, if we vote on it, it still becomes a board action. So, you know, with that in mind, I don't know if that means anything to anybody, but. So, any further discussion? Call for the-
I was just going to say that, so, when we interviewed John for this job, I, he was my first choice. He said I was impressed with what he said. And through the time we've worked with him, I've always been impressed with him. I think he made a stupid mistake, but you know, all of us have made mistakes. And I wonder how many could be as professional as John has been through all this. If you made a mistake and you had everybody grunting and raving at you, and it was in the papers and all, could you be as professional as he has been? And that's impressed me greatly.
Okay. Thank you. All right. So, I'm going to call for the questions. So, all of those in favor of the motion to give John an additional two years on his contract as stated, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you. All right. Okay. So, now we need to hire an adult education coordinator.
Okay. Andrew Miller has served as our adult education coordinator for this past year, and did a very nice job. And I had an opportunity to sit down with her recently and talk about some of her ideas and vision for growing the adult ed program is very important. And she has some dynamic ideas about trying to bring in some turnstools classes and trying to do some homework helper type stuff, and utilize, you know, staff and the building and the resources we have in the community to serve our adult ed needs. So, she did a great job in doing some surveys last year, so I am recommending that she is rehired for this next school year, have her adult ed coordinator.
I'm not a motioner. I think the adult ed is more of a, to dump 13 questions.
Discussion? And we appreciate her getting the program going again, because we kind of had a laugh there. So, all right. So, call for a question? All those in favor? Aye. All right. So, now we're on to new business and the budget amendment proclamation.
As you recall, we did a budget amendment proclamation back in June to try to pay for the second train field. The problem is that it fell within that budget year. And we did not have an opportunity to hire contractors on and everything by the end of June in order to spend those money. We talked to the OPI about the proclamation and the amendment that was done in the previous year. And they said, well, it wasn't used, it expires, but the money still exists within your budget. You have to go through the whole process of another proclamation for this budget year. And so, that's where we're at right now, is to just continue the process, to say no. It was, the difference, though, in this proclamation and this budget amendment as opposed to the previous one, is that it is for more money because we now know what the fixed costs are for this. Now, you may be asking yourself the question, why is it that we have about $550,000 of expenditures that we see in the contractors' bid and in the engineering services? And you're asking for the total amount in the reserves and in the building fund in order to pay for this, which is about $600,000, $700,000. And the answer to that question is, it allows us to have a contingency. In the event that the engineers unearth something that was unexpected, we would then have money to be able to use as a contingency on that project. If we don't use those monies in the contingency, they would stay in the fund that they're in right now, once all bills have been paid for this project. So, that is the only reason the monies are there, because we all know, if we start digging up the earth, if we unearth a huge rock that was unexpected, we're going to have to figure out how to get it taken care of. So, we need to have some kind of contingency for those things.
John, what does the bid come in at?
Let me get the motion first, okay? Make sure, I'm sorry, you don't want. So, I guess we need to have a motion, and I think we need to read this into the minutes, do we not?
Yes.
Okay. Does somebody read?
At regular meeting, the board trustee of the school district number 15-6, Ravelry County, Montana, held September 10, 2013, at 7:00 PM at the Florence Colton School District Conference Room, with all reservations renewed.
Want to change that?
Yeah.
The school library.
Whereas the trustees of the school district number 15-6, Ravelry County, Montana, have made a determination that there is a not perceived need of a district of a sale of public train fields that cannot be postponed without affecting the safety of students and employees or the educational function of the district. The district's budget for the general fund does not provide sufficient financing to properly maintain and support the district for the entire current school year. And whereas the trustees have determined an amendment to the elementary and high school building fund in the amount of $125,674 and the general fund budget in the amount of $482,000 necessary under the provision of Section 20-9-161 of MCA. And whereas the anticipated source of financing, the budget amendment expenditures shall be the building fund and general fund reserve. Therefore, be resolved, the board trustees of the school district number 14-6, Ravelry County, Montana, proclaiming the need for amendment to the elementary and high school building fund in the amount of $125,674 and the general fund budget in the amount of $482,000 for fiscal years 2013, 2014, and under Section 20-9-161 of MCA, for the purpose identified above. And be further resolved, that the board trustees of the school district number 15-6, Ravelry County, Montana, will meet at 7:00 PM at the Florence Colton School District Conference Room on October 8, 2013, for the purpose of considering adopting the budget amendment.
Okay, so with that read, we, uh, need a motion.
I will set the approval of the reprimand as read. One second.
Okay, so now let's have discussion. And this is over on your turn, and I just wanted to know what the bid came in at, the bid you accepted.
Yeah, the bid that was awarded was four hundred eighty-four thousand dollars, and it was to, uh, Western Escavation.
Is that Missoula?
Uh, yeah, it's on Missoula, but it's on Kevin Midi, uh, who owns that. I believe he's one of the owners of that company.
Good. I just have a, a question, it isn't really on the resolution, but I believe it's going to be placed adjoining to the property that we own. Uh, we live next to the school property, and I'm just curious where it's been cited and things like that, I've not talked...
You would come over to the district office, Mr. McGee has the details.
Yeah, I could, I, I know where your property line is, and I don't believe it's gonna go that far over, but we will, you know, I know there's some survey markers up there, and I'd be happy to sit down with you and go over the details of that, but be aware that I'm not gonna be in the office during this week.
Thank you.
Yes, please.
And I just want to say, thank God that Mr. McGee has put money in our reserves every year that he's been here, because if he hadn't, we wouldn't have this extra money, because we were told that bid was gonna be a lot lower, the cost, and the bid came up really high. So, everyone ought to applaud Mr. McGee for putting money in the reserve fund so that we have this, so this project can be taken. And I just love your remark.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
She wants to press his phone.
Thank you.
Well, what would be nice is to get rid of this sewer problem that's been smelling around since, probably as long as I've been here. Now, I don't know if it's a correlation.
I'm not used to saying that. So, I'm gonna call for the question.
So, sir, you're, you're saying that a hundred and twenty-three additional thousand dollars, a hundred twenty-three thousand, five twenty-six on top of the forty-four bid, are you, for possible change orders or unforeseen?
Well, there's, there's sixty thousand dollars, which is the contract owed to the engineer for engineering and design, and then beyond that, I'm, you know...
Wasn't that included in their original bid?
No. The hearing wasn't included in the construction with the, uh, Western Escavation.
Were you, was that by the way?
Mm-hmm, I was.
So, you're saying, uh, all I'm saying is it started out at a hundred thousand, went to two hundred fifty thousand, went to three hundred thousand, forty-four, now it's six oh seven. I'm all in for a sewer, I, I recommend that we move up to that area, and all four of this, but this, this, uh, in the building business, and these, these numbers skyrocketed incredibly fast, and I'm very uncomfortable, and I stated that last time, of how that happened. So, John, do you mind? Yeah, I've been, I know, I'm all, I've been there a couple times, thank you, but, um...
All right, so any, uh, anything else?
I mean, can we call out of order on that? You know, I mean, you do it on everybody else.
Okay.
I'm speaking, a board member's speaking, you're mumbling, it's all...
All right, um, please don't, please don't go there.
Thank you, very much.
Thank you.
Well, six oh seven is not...
What's that?
We may not spend six oh seven.
Yeah, I understand, I, I know that, I'm just, my questions are why, 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 where is it at, you know, so that's all, I'm all, you know, I'm kind of responsible for overseeing finance here, I'm just, I'm trying to think, you know, should this be spent properly, and I've been, you know, I had questions with the, the engineered bids from day one, and I, I, you know, I stated those very well-known to everybody, and I know you don't agree, so I'm just putting where I stand on this. Like, a hundred percent kind of brand-new sewer system could not be more, I'm very concerned about how these, these costs got so high so fast that I've been a short of my mind.
Well, I, I want to say about that, that I think that, um, we went into the whole thing on too much of a rush, because there, there were, we were trying to get this going, and we gave the, uh, we, the, uh, the engineer came to school prepared with a plan to fix the existing cements, and at that meeting, uh, the discussion became, well, what would it cost to do the whole thing? And he had about three days to come up with that. And obviously, um, three days isn't enough on a project of size. And then the EQ got into it. So, all bets are off in my, in my opinion, when the EQ gets into it, I'm sorry, that's just all I know. But, um, so that, that's kind of how I see the cost escalating, um, and Mr. Kobe did, uh, Mr. Reynolds, I'm sorry, did, uh, suggest that we have some value engineering. But, um, to hire another engineering firm and, and save fifty thousand dollars when it would cost who knows what, since, you know, we were like, okay, is that money well-spent? And maybe it is, maybe it isn't.
And then to get hiring, I said the second, ask, hire to get us...
So, um, so, you know, if you've gotten, yeah, I don't know, I don't know if, uh, but that's how I see, we got to this number, so that's just my consensus. Mr. Paris?
Is this, um, John, what you were saying, is this cost plus, or is it a cutoff point? And what I mean by that, um, whatever the original number is, then you're adding the hundred and something thousand dollars. Is there a cutoff point in the contract that it can't go over a certain amount, or...
Well, it, it's a contract, I mean, it's, it's four hundred eighty-four thousand dollars, is what the contractor's gonna do this job for, but if you have unforeseen the coming, they're gonna stop the project right there and say, "We can't proceed. We're gonna need, we're gonna, we're gonna need to go back and relook at what's happening." And those things can happen within a contract. And the point being, if the board does the proclamation to set aside the extra monies in the event of a contingency for a problem, um, then we don't have to run into a complete stop, shut the whole contract down, and not move forward. Maybe it's a five thousand dollar extra cost that we, we have to incur, you know, I don't know, I mean, all I'm saying is, it's not unusual for, uh, schools or businesses to have contingencies on larger projects.
Yeah, I guess I'm just saying that, you know, he starts digging and finds that there's a fracking line, let's please be happy about that, and, uh, all of a sudden he says he's gonna post an extra million dollars, and I'm being very facetious, obviously. Are, is there any way of putting some sort of limit on it, so that something like that doesn't happen? Does that make any sense?
Well, believe me, if we, uh, if we run into any issues, we're gonna bring it to the board of trustees, because we have policies that already dictate that, uh, limit towards the superintendent. And I believe you're aware of it, because that limit was set when you were on.
Yeah, no, I was just curious if there was some way of, um, sort of binding the contractor, so it can't go, you know...
I believe you have to do a change order, if something came up, you have to do a change order, and we have to approve it.
Okay.
So, there, you, you know, so it has to come to us if it's some significant amount of money, so we, we have the final say, right?
Correct.
All right, so I'm gonna call for the questions. Um, all those in favor of, where are we at now? We're voting on this proclamation, right?
Correct.
All right, all those in favor of voting on the budget amendment proclamation, please signify by saying aye. Aye, aye. Opposed?
Aye.
All right, thank you. All right, so last but not least, we have the Missoula Area Curriculum Director's End...
Each year, we appoint a representative to represent the school district on Missoula Area Curriculum Consortium. The school district is required to have a curriculum director, and in order to meet that requirement, we want the Missoula Area Consortium, um, point being, uh, it, it is the consortium's job to review the curriculum in its cycle, and this year in cycle, we're on mathematics, so we're doing our mathematics. Last year, we're in the communication arts, or language arts, and had our extra purchases. And then the next year after that, we'll move to science, so we're just on cycle and ask that the boards continue to have new representatives on the Missoula Area Curriculum Consortium Board.
Okay, so, um, discussion?
This is, being part of a kind of a situation here, is this absolutely necessary?
Yes, it is. If you did not belong to the consortium, then you'd be required by the state to, uh, hire somebody to do this for you. And so, if you go up to Corvallis, Corvallis doesn't belong to any curriculum consortium, so they pay for a curriculum director to be part of their staff up there. But then if you look at, uh, Hamilton, Stevensville, Victor, Lone Rock, and Darby, they've created their own curriculum consortium, and so they offset the cost of, you know, that it is there to belong to the Bitterroot Valley Curriculum Consortium. Now, because we straddled the Bitterroot Valley and Orvally County in Missoula, we could have gone either way, and years ago, um, previous boards had chosen to be part of the Missoula Area Curriculum Consortium, and that's where we've been since.
Are there costs associated with the money?
Yes, there are.
Okay, you need to know what those are, off the top of your head?
Um, yeah.
It's going to cost a thousand dollars last year.
It, I would have to look, I would have to look that number up, I'm not aware of off the top of my head, and I...
But six thousand dollars is cheaper than hiring a whole person to do that, or paying somebody a psychopath to do that, which would have to...
Six thousand, no, that's, that's not a number, I would have to, I would have to look for that, it's, it's a ballpark, I mean, in that area.
Can we get those and table us and move it next time?
Well, there will be a deal that's certainly coming forward, um, you know, if you don't think we need to belong to it, then I would suggest you vote against.
No, it's not that, just like, know the cost.
Well, I don't have those costs, but...
Move the table up until we figure out, John.
Well, we've already, we have a motion and a second on the table, we're holding that.
And you can, you can table it.
But let me, let me just, um, just say, is there a timeframe that we have to, to tell them yes or no at this point?
Well, usually this time of year, they, they launch two, and then they have the bill, and then you have the bill, so...
Okay, so...
You can table it till next month.
And, and that won't, that won't put anybody in any kind of jeopardy, so, okay. All right, so I'm gonna call for the question, and we are gonna vote on the motion, and it's on the, on the table, uh, which is to approve this, uh, and then we'll see what we do from there, okay? So, all in favor of this, uh, of having John be in the curriculum consortium at this point, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. We want to have John report at the next meeting what the cost is.
We will have that bill, uh, before we...
Okay, so I want to say thank you to everybody for hanging in and for coming, and I'd love to see if any people can help me on this. Thank you for watching.